Sure.
Good. I'd like to call the Wairika Commission, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Devlin. Commissioner Rolzinski.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien is absent and Chair Osborne.
Here.
Uh, no special presentation at this time. Um, general public comments. Uh, this is a time for the public regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission of Wairika. Public comments period is not intended to as an answer, a question and answer period or a conversation with the commissioners or city staff. Commissioners, when recognized by the chair, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the planning commission during the public comment section of the meeting. Expect, uh, except to direct the staff to prepare a report or place it on a future agenda item. Um, if there's any public comments. All right, I will open and close public comments. Uh, definite commissioner comment.
So I would just like to start off that there is no December meeting, so we will not reconvene until January. So we are off next month due to the holiday season. Uh, the city manager and I are actually going to be reaching out to the planning commissioners to try and set up appointments with you. If you're interested during the month of December, since we don't have a meeting, we would like to sit down with even the outgoing commissioners just to talk about what we can improve upon for your experience for future meetings. And then for continuing commissioners, talk about some of the items that you'd like to address in the coming future, uh, so that we can make sure and accommodate those as much as we can. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add with that.
Yeah, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Uh, as you guys are aware, we had the election on eleven eight. Uh, we're awaiting certification from the county clerk. We're anticipating a changeover date for city council of twelve twenty. Um, we also are doing an onboarding orientation for the new city council members as well as the ones that will remain over. So we've gone over that package. We have a consultant coming in to go over Brown Act professionalism and decorum in early January. And then we will hold a strategic planning session with that city council in the first quarter of the calendar year of two thousand twenty-three, and I'll come back and report out what their vision of the city is. And then last night, eleven fifteen, the city council did hold, uh, planning commission interviews. And so we anticipate them making two appointments on twelve six.
Thank you. Commissioners, you got anything? Okay. Um, consent agenda.
And just a quick, uh, we had a misprint for the consent agenda. We do not have any items tonight for your consideration. We'll be bringing the October twenty-sixth meeting minutes at the January meeting.
All right, then we can skip the consent agenda.
Yes.
Public hearing. Two zero two two dash two eight Whipple tentative parcel map, public hearing.
All right, thank you. So the city of Wairika received an application from Todd and Stacy Whipple to divide assessors' parcel numbers, zero five zero dash seven one one dash one hundred into two new parcels with a remainder. The two proposed parcels are immediately adjacent to the public right-of-way, which is Northview Drive in the northwest corner of the city limits. There are no proposed changes to the general plan designation of low-density residential or the low-density residential zoning designation, which is R one. The applicant is proposing to construct two single-family houses on parcel one and parcel two, and that potentially actually could be, um, two single-family homes on parcel one. Um, but those are all within the appropriate uses and standards within that zoning code designation. So the, uh, property is surrounded by low-density residential as well as vacant land. To the east is, uh, zoned R one, R two, and R three per a previous subdivision application and rezoning application that was received back in the two thousands. And then to the west is, uh, unincorporated county land, which is zoned Ag two, which is, uh, non-prime agriculture and is owned by a logging company. So the property itself and the subdivision that's being proposed can be found on page twelve of your applications. And so this is an extremely large property. It'll be separated into a thirty-seven point four eight acre parcel one and a point five two acre parcel two, and the remainder will be seventy-six point three nine acres. And so one of the, the items that came up in terms of a question, uh, from a commissioner, just to share with everyone else, is a question about the conditions of approval that we recommend for the application. So part of our requirements for the subdivision map act is we give a fifteen-day notice in consultation with local agencies, which includes both state and federal agencies. And those are from government code sections six six four five three to six six four five five point nine. So state agencies are included, so we do notify Caltrans, uh, CDFW. Uh, sometimes it will be the Forest Service if we're, uh, nearby the Klamath National Forest. They were not notified for this project. School districts, uh, different agencies that could have, uh, interest in this. The assessor's office and the tax collector are also contacted. So there is an ability for these agencies to recommend conditions of approval based on the context and setting of the property. And so we typically put these as conditions of approval because some of these usually are associated with state and, uh, federal law. And so, uh, one of the things too is some of the conditions that are related to state and federal law, even if you do not put them as conditions of approval for the tentative parcel maps, they are still conditions of the project itself and are typically placed onto, uh, building permit applications. So the, the, the question was about the conditions related to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, which we do actually have a representative, Deborah Hawk, here today on, um, if she was planning to make a comment or not, I'm not sure. But maybe she can address some questions if you have any specifics for those. So for example, some of the conditions for this one are a little bit higher than what we saw with the proposed, uh, Howell Barnes tentative parcel map, but very similar in terms of requiring basic level biological assessments. And this is mainly to ensure that there aren't any issues on the property. So for example, proposed conditions twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, um, would be automatically met if we did not find any special sensitive species on the property when we do the basic biological assessment. Um, condition twenty clarifies a standard practice to ensure botanical surveys are completed in appropriate time and in appropriate method. There are no special requirements associated to that in terms of mitigations. It's just prescribing, uh, how that survey should be conducted and when. Condition number twenty-three is actually a requirement in the building permit application, and that references dark sky compliant downward-facing lighting, and that is a part of that, uh, title twenty-four piece. And actually, I skipped that. That's condition twenty-four. Uh, twenty-three is related to if we were to find any sensitive, uh, stream beds or anything, uh, related to natural drainages that would drain into the Wairika Creek, which is known to have androgynous fish species. And I probably said that word wrong. I'm just trying to do this off the top of my head a little bit. And, uh, thank you. I knew it was around the minute it came out. And so, uh, if that is found, there is a prescribed fifty-foot buffer, which is a state requirement from CDFW. I don't really have any concerns for this condition because the proposed construction is not going to be in that southeast, uh, sector of the parcel one. Um, but we do need to include it as a, a state and federal requirement as part of the project. And then condition twenty is a standard condition to ensure trenches are covered at the end of workdays to prevent injury to wildlife and people, um, which is a standard practice under OSHA as well. Um, so again, uh, that was just kind of a question related to those, um, conditions. Uh, the other conditions like condition twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven have the associated California or federal references to those laws. So I just kind of wanted to go through how some of these conditions come, come to be. And what I try to do is attachment three in your packets, which is not the, um, resolution, but it's just I pull out the conditions of approval and I put a header on it to know which department or which agency is requesting those conditions, um, so that you can take a look at those as we go through. Um, but we do also have the applicant here to answer any questions. Um, and I'll just open it up for questions and discussion.
Do you want me, um, I forgot, do you want me to open a public comment first or commissioners first?
Uh, we'll go to public comment. And then the one thing I did forget to address is we did receive a letter late last night from CDFW, um, clarifying their conditions of approval. And basically, CDFW is requesting, um, based on the possible presence of sensitive species due to the context and setting of the property. Um, they're asking for the basic biological assessment. And if the planning commission chooses to not have that as a condition of approval, that they would prefer a initial study under CEQA, which would mean that we would back the project up. It would probably add about three months and approximately thirty-two thousand dollars to the project itself to make that initial study happen. Uh, the basic biological assessment is, I, I think, a lot more reasonable in terms of time being complete and cost, um, which is why we went with that condition recommendation. But I know Deborah is on the line and could maybe clarify the letter a little bit more. Um, but just wanted to let you know that we did get that late last evening for this meeting. And I did provide a printed copy and emailed you ahead of time that, that same letter. So if you have any questions about that too.
It is, uh, I do have a question. Uh, that letter is really not, that's attached more to the building on, right? Not just splitting the parcel.
It could, it is associated with splitting the parcel as well. So we do typically see the California Department of Fish and Wildlife request a condition of approval for biological assessment, nesting bird surveys that would be triggered at the time of construction or site modification. So it is, it is part of the, the tentative parcel map, but it is more impacted by the structure.
Can I just chime in? This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, but just to follow up with the Chair Osborne. If you do the biological assessment now and then you move into construction, you've already completed your environmental, is that correct?
Yeah, based on the conditions that we have now. Thank you.
All right, I will open it to a public comment if anybody has a comment about it. Otherwise, um, we can ask questions. You have a comment?
And, and actually, uh, if you guys want to come up, the applicants typically are afforded up to fifteen minutes to kind of start us off for the public hearing. So I apologize.
Hi, uh, I'm Dan Wallace. I'm a land surveyor. I drew the map. So, um, I don't really have anything to add, but I do have a question. The, uh, the requested conditions that you got from Fish and Game, which I think are conditions, I want to say twenty through twenty-seven roughly. Um, is there anything that needs to be done in regard to that between now and the map recording? Or are all of those conditions met at the time of the building?
They're met at the time of construction or site modification, so it would not hold up the final package for the parcel map itself.
And I think typically that environmental, uh, survey can be confined to the site itself, not the whole property. Is that right?
Uh, yes. So if, when we do a basic biological assessment, we would assess the areas that would be impacted by construction or site modifications. So we would do the assessment on the roadway that would go to the house, the driveway.
Right.
Um, the house site itself, and that's it.
That makes sense. Um, I think that's all I had was that one bit of clarification. Uh,
My only question, mine, it's Todd Whipple, um, looking negative divided. Um, what is the time period if I did? I don't know if you know this, if I submitted a building permit for me to do the bio- biologist's study or the bottomless to, then I can start building. Do you, I, I think I asked you the other day, but I, I wanted, I was just curious to clarify that. They already know.
Yeah, we can do portions of the basic.
Join the meeting.
Assessment, and Deborah is on, um, or might have popped off or on at this. She just fell off. Okay. Um, so the biological assessment can happen at any time. And so we had talked about, I could even set up a time to, uh, do the biological assessment. You know, after you submit your building application, I think the biggest thing we would have to define is the impacted area. So where you're going to be working. And, um, the one, uh, tricky piece is going to be the botanical survey. But we've talked about that there's been some previous disturbance due to wildfire prevention measures. And so if there's a mainly disturbed area, we would basically work with recommendations from CDFW and how we would do the botanical or flower and plants piece, um, because plants only flower in springtime.
Rather quickly, quickly, it seems like it shouldn't hold up. Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted, I wanted to clarify it because.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you can do the assessment at the same time that your building permits are being processed.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? All right, I'd like to close public comments and open it to commissioners. Does have any questions?
I have a question on parcel two. Is that correct where you're going to build your first two houses or a house right now?
So there's a, if you take a look, there's a dotted line, um, on parcel one, which kind of shows in the upper left-hand corner. That's kind of a, uh, and that may have moved a little bit, so we don't have the actual location until we get the site plan and the building permit. And then I believe, uh, that there is also going to be a proposal for a single-family residence on parcel two, which will meet, which will be in a very similar lot kind of orientation as the rest of the subdivision. Um, it's a, it's a nice tight half-acre lot, and so I don't have any issues with the setbacks. It should be able to meet that for a nice-sized, single-family home on that lot. So I believe those are the two single-family homes you're proposing.
Okay, my question regarding that is, do you have, are there utilities on there already or do you have to put utilities in?
It's through the water. Doesn't matter, uh, how much time that has all the time. Yes, there's.
Should I put street or gutters or?
Street, gutter, paper, it's all in.
It's all in.
Okay.
Yep.
That's my question.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right, well then, can I get a motion? I don't know what pages are.
Uh, so there's a suggested motion on page four of your packets, or, uh, you can also look at the recommended action on your agendas on page two under the summary for the, the public hearing items.
If I move to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash zero seven, recommending approval of the tentative map parcel. Number two zero two two dash two eight, the conditions of the city council on the third of class fifteen, for the botanical exemption from CEQA, the city council rule.
Second. Anybody? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you. And just to let you know, uh, we will have it scheduled for the December sixth city council meeting for a public hearing. Uh, they begin at six thirty. Yep.
All right, looks like we have no old business, new business, underground restrictions and policies. Regulation, sorry.
Actually, so this was a requested item from Commissioner Fernandez had mentioned at our last meeting, a discussion on undergrounding regulations and policies within the city itself um, for, for projects. And this kind of came about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because the Highway Three project is going through town, and Caltrans did not, uh, elect to underground any of the electrical or telecom utilities as part of that project. Um, and so we got into a discussion about what is the city's availability or what can the city do to advocate for more undergrounding of electrical and telecom communications. Um, in most cases is usually to prevent scenic vista obstruction. And so I kind of just prepared a very brief kind of, uh, introduction to the topic. Um, there's a lot of options that we can do as a city, and, and there's a lot that we've been pushing forward. We do not have any regulations in the ordinances to underground power utilities or telecom at this time. We do advocate for it in projects, and so some subdevelopments and some developers will do it just because of aesthetic purposes, but there is no requirement to do it at this time.
Now, it's going to be more expensive, though.
It could be. So for new construction, it is not that bad because it's, it's an easier cost. But to retrofit the system, it's much more costly. Um, but there are grants available to do that. So a lot of communities are successful in getting hazard mitigation dollars, which is the four oh four hazmat um, grant that is an ongoing enrolling grant. And we do it from the perspective of the more you underground those lines, the safer, um, your conveyance of electrical and communications is during high wind events, winter storms, ice storms, um, wildfire as well, wildfire prevention by undergrounding those wires. I know that PAC Power is now electing to underground a significant portion of their system instead of doing the improvements that they have been to separate the wires for wildfire prevention. So there's a couple of ways that we can do this. And in, in conversation, uh, an email between myself and the, the main engineer for Caltrans, um, she basically stated that they did not want to add the additional costs because they were having to reroute a significant amount of utilities in the Highway Three project that they did not want to include electrical at this time. Um, but, and she did say that in most cases, if cities do have requirements for projects to do that, they will end up doing it. So unfortunately, we missed, we missed the bus a little bit in terms of having those regulations in place and imposing them on a new project like that. So we have a couple of options to rectify that. So we can, uh, update our codes to require all new construction and subdivisions to automatically underground utilities as they go in. This is a very typical practice of most cities I've worked with, um, throughout the United States. Um, this would prevent any additional overhead lines from being constructed, especially when you take a look at where our vacant properties are, which tend to be at the periphery of the ci- city where you're going to get a lot of scenic clutter. The second is the city can update its codes to require undergrounding utility lines when a city or developer reconstructs roadways and pathways throughout the city. For example, the city will be reconstructing Southern Oregon, uh, South Oregon Street as part of a roads master planning project. Um, we could have an internal policy or requirement that all of our future road projects has that, have that as an aspect. And so we include it in the grant applications. Uh, in addition to that, the city also has a public improvements requirement for developers that if they are doing a renovation project or if they're doing improvements on an infill lot and they hit a certain dollar amount, they're required to do street improvements. So right now, you are required to do curb gutter sidewalk if it's new construction or if you are doing a renovation over thirty thousand dollars. Now, you don't have to include undergrounding at the thirty thousand mark. You can advocate to step it. So for example, if someone's doing a renovation project that ends up hitting a hundred thousand dollars, that's when we would trigger the underground improvements. So there's a couple of options to work with that so that it's not a ton of public improvements at one time for a developer. But if it is something like, say, the redevelopment of the Shop Coast site, they're going to be spending a lot of money there. And so it makes kind of sense if they are doing a larger project that the impact of an undergrounding is going to be much smaller as, a smaller percentage of that budget. And so we can discuss adding that to the regulations itself. Or the other thing too is we don't necessarily have to give underground as the only option. A lot of cities advocate for non-thoroughfare public right-of-ways, so requiring alleyways to hold all of the electrical and telecom as opposed to having it in front of the building itself. So we could talk about requiring them to move it to the back of the lot where it's going to be less obtrusive as to the public right-of-way area. And then finally, the city can take an aggressive stance and develop an undergrounding utilities and developing an underground work plan, um, that would actively seek funds to underground utility lines throughout the city in a phased approach. And so I've worked on two different plans similar to this where we basically went through. We looked at what we call, um, high-impact areas within the city where you have a lot of pedestrians, where you have a lot of tourism, heavy traffic. And we basically prioritize those areas. We do a workup of what the potential cost is going to be. And then we actively work on grants to go through and underground those wires as we move through. Now, that may be a good option to do, um, for existing, you know, minor street. You know, Highway Three is going to be really difficult because once you break the ground, um, on these types of road projects, they do not allow you to touch it. So you cannot bore under, you cannot do most of the undergrounding you need to do for about seven years after the project. So Highway Three is probably out of the question at the moment. Um, there, I did ask if there's an ability to underground parts of the system in the later phases of the projects, which, which is about three years out. And I was told no, that the design is set and they do not want to do any of that. Um, unfortunately, Caltrans, uh, is, is not going to budge on that. But that doesn't mean we can't work on other high-impact areas, taking a look at our park system, Green Horn, Southern or, South Oregon Street. Um, we can do that in that phased approach. If we do happen to do that plan, it would come to planning commission and we would work on that together. We would bring a recommendation, and then we would take input from you and the general public on where they find other places where it's a big issue. The other thing too, I did not put in the staff report, but it was brought to my attention after, is we do not have any aesthetic regulation on cell towers, which you do have that option as well. So cell towers in the state of California are allowed as a use by right. You cannot say you can't have a cell tower, but what you can say as a city is that it has to either be masked or it has to be a public art project. Um, so there's a number of different programs throughout the state that actually do a really nice job of hiding them or having them, uh, modified into kind of a statement piece art project. Um, and that's something we can talk about as well. We probably should have a telecommunications ordinance. We do not have one. Um, and so that's something that could happen in the future. We have had two inquiries for new cell towers within the city of Wairika. They are looking for new property to place more because the current, uh, cell tower on Butcher Hill is at capacity. So they are looking for additional, um, sites to do that. So I would expect, um, some telecommunications applications coming in the next couple of years. And so if you do want to talk about the aesthetics of those, this is a good time to get those regulations in place on how you would like to do that. Um, and as I said before, those are kind of the three main ones that we can do. Um, we can do a combination of all that, requiring new construction and coming up with a program for retrofitting the current system. And we can do a phased-in approach. I just wanted to introduce the item, gauge your interest in what level you would like, and then we will prepare, um, code changes or any other programming that you would like and bring it to the January meeting for your consideration.
Thank you so much for all of that. And I'm curious what you guys think because this originally began as part of a discussion about just beautifying Wairika in the last meeting. And that was just one of the things that I said that I noticed is the power lines. Like, I feel like that's just a lot of just clutter. And it's one thing to require, you know, certain stylistic changes for businesses along Main Street, but still speaking all of that clutter. And I don't even know, like, I kind of wonder if some of it is old because I know in my house, I know that I have old telephone lines, or, you know, just, just really, you know, probably unnecessary wires. Um, and I don't know if I'm the only one. If I'm the only one, I, I certainly don't want to be pushing anything, but I'm curious for you.
Why there's only if you go down Main Street, I mean, where they're doing the new project, but you said it's too late. But.
Yeah.
If you put it down the back of the buildings, would that be a lot less expensive?
Yeah, so a, a lot of cities have allowed the kind of what we call a backlot, um, requirement or an alleyway requirement for the placement. Um, and it does help with, you know, it is a much lower cost. It's a lot easier to, to do. Um, really, the largest cost associated with these projects is what we call the final mile of wiring. And it's actually the retrofitting of your individual house. So if you look at your house, your line usually comes in at the top part of the house. And the largest portion of these projects is actually not within the city right-of-way. It's retrofitting that line down to the base of your home, running and trenching a line through your property. And so that's a little bit of a sensitivity thing that as we go through and do these projects, if this is the direction you would like to go, we would have to get property owner approvals for that. We would have to have options for if they didn't want to do that for their house, um, and keep an upright line that would still give them that power from an underground source. So there's a couple of little nuances that we would have to work out, but that's usually where your largest cost is, is actually the on-property retrofit of the line from the house to the lot, to the pole. The poles themselves and the transformers are not terrible to underground in terms of cost. It's usually all of the individual little wires going to and from it.
We think that'd be a lot less maintenance, so having it underground to back the property.
If it is engineered correctly, yes. I, I have seen some of them.
Otherwise, it's a big cost to clean it up.
Yeah. I have, uh, only had one circumstance where it was an older system and it was flooded because it was not sealed correctly and constructed correctly. And so that was, um, interesting. That, that took down the entire system, so. We, we would make sure that that's done correctly.
It would be for undergrounding as much as we could then. It's easy. My concern is a part of.
We are currently, uh, walking the entire sidewalk system, and we are actually mapping every single one of the instances where there is a pole in the sidewalk. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it, there, there, there are quite a few things that could have happened with the courthouse that didn't, um, because.
Understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Moving forward, I guess. Moving forward, I think it's, I came from Little Town in Sunbelt. Where they quietly came down and undergrounded everything.
Thank you for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I talked about it, but really, let me talk about, um, the main source of the fires that we've seen that's been so catastrophic in our state.
Yeah, I think we should address all of them.
Yeah. Um, so are you interested in looking at code changes for new construction and retrofit?
I think definitely for new construction. I think, uh, I I would like to maybe learn a little bit more about retrofit, you know? If I'm going to add a bathroom on, what am I supposed to, you know, what am I going to have to be required to do?
Well, it would be a dollar amount. We could figure out, right?
Right.
Yeah.
A little bit reasonable. I, I certainly don't want to put so much of a, uh,
burden.
obstacle on our homeowners here.
Hmm.
But some incentive.
Yeah. And we have been discussing the $30,000 threshold for public improvements and, and potentially moving it to a percentage instead. Um, making it a little bit more equitable that way as opposed to just a flat 30,000. Because obviously as inflation has happened, you can hit 30,000 very, very Yeah. So it's, it's a, yeah. So we've talked about moving it to a percentage anyway. And so I have seen a lot of cities do public improvement plans that do a percentage. And each time you go up to a certain percentage mark, you are required to do a different level of public improvement. And so we can present something to you about that and you can take a look at those levels and, and we can, uh, adjust those as appropriate.
I think you'd have to work with the power company to see if they can all establish that you it's very costly to just
Yes.
How much of a grant would handle a lot of that? If you had grants to take care of a bunch of that.
Yeah, actually I did work with one city in Wisconsin that got their entire system undergrounded through a grant. So was that hazard? Again, it's a hazard mitigation grant. Um, if you want to know where all the money is, it's the Department of Defense and, and Homeland Security, which is, um, the homeland security is what's in charge of FEMA. And so FEMA is very well funded. Uh, so the 404 permits are the, the federal funds that come through the state. They're always revolving. And so there's an option to do that. We can make the argument that it's for fire prevention. You can make the argument for, um, continued electrical feeds during storm events. That's a usually a bigger sell for FEMA funding because you want to make sure that you're providing electrical to, um, people in need, especially people who are in, uh, kind of homebound and have medical issues that need to have a machine. Um, so that, that's a, it's a very doable thing.
Well, it sounds like you have some experience with this and I appreciate that. And I mean, whatever we can do with the add to the January agenda.
I, I like the cell tower thing too.
Yeah. You want to, you want to, you want to deal with cell towers? Okay.
I'd have to look at that one.
Yeah. Um, the other thing too is actually our public works director, when he first got on into the position, did a whole study about what it would take to underground the whole system. He worked with Pacific Power. And that's when we came up with, we realized it was that, oops, sorry. The final mile is what's really the big cost killer for a lot of these projects. And so, uh, he's actually very supportive of it as well. So I think having him, uh, help with some of the engineering pieces will be really helpful. Um, but I just, do you want to open this up for a public comment as well?
That's true. I would like to open this up for any public comment. Anybody have anything to say on this? All right, I will close it.
Okay. This is great to work with.
Since we're putting on the agenda, that's what we have to.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. Um, and so I will add cell towers and give you a couple of options on those as well. Um, the fun thing with the cell towers is we can also, um, tackle antennas. Um, so AM, FM, uh, and satellite dishes. Um, it's the same thing. You have to allow them, but in historic district, districts specifically, you can require that they are, uh, camouflaged. And so I've seen some pretty interesting solar or not solar, um, the satellites, uh, actually hidden in historic districts as kind of like little fun, like the hidden Mickey type thing. They do like little fun, little things on them. So they can be really cute. Okay. That, this is great. This is, uh, I've got enough, enough to move on and I think we're good.
All right. Uh, and Joanna, future planning items.
Uh, January is going to be interesting. I have an annexation. We're going to do that.
Really?
Yeah. You sure? You already signed your resignation. You don't, you don't Uh, but yeah, so we will, we will possibly have a pre-zoning meeting for annexation. So we'll probably do a little bit of, uh, education around that and the whole process that we're going to go through. It is a long process. Um, it's not particularly fun, but this is a super easy one. Uh, so it'll be very fun to go through. And then I will be bringing back your undergrounding utilities and cell towers and, uh, yeah, and we'll be doing some training for the new commissioners as well. Um, some of it may be a repeat for, uh, current continuing commissioners. So I'll try and do that as a special presentation at the beginning and maybe we can have a late start for you two. Um, but it's just going to be on the basics of the, the commission and Brown Act. So. All right. Thank you.
All right. I will adjourn.